Okay, let's call to order the August 28th, 2018 Andover City Council meeting. I'll start off with roll call to my left.
Caroline Hale, Andover Councilmember.
Troy Tabor, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Mike Roosevelt, Deputy Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Detter, City Administrator.
All right, item three is the invocation. I see Pastor Smith there with Faith Baptist. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Glad to be here. Let's pray here. And we follow, we do thank you for the recent rains. We thank you for those who work here in Andover, those who serve us, those who protect us, those who live around us, and we just pray for just safety through these months. We thank you for just a community that we live in and even celebration of greater Andover days coming soon again. We thank you for just this great place to live and work and serve. We thank you for, again, just being here with us tonight as we take care of your business, and we just think it'd be good to be orderly as it always is, and we just pray that our community would appreciate what they have here, in Jesus' name, amen.
Would you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? You have three minutes.
So I'm here to talk again about the pit bull ban that remains in place. Everyone benefits from a safe community, both people and pets, and we all have the same intentions to keep our community safe. Andover's pit bull ban is ineffective because it focuses on the wrong thing. This ban punishes innocent dogs and responsible owners the most. In 2017, nine pit bulls were seized because they were reported to be in Andover, not because of an attack, which outnumbers the one incident of a pit bull attack that happened that same year. I and many other Andover citizens oppose any breed ban because it has not been scientifically proven that any breed is more inherently aggressive than others. And again, it mostly affects good dogs and their owners. Andover's pit bull ban puts a burden on our police to correctly identify mixed breeds, as well as seizing innocent pets from their loving families and risking euthanasia. In a study by Ph.D., Scott Powd at Matrix Canine Research Institute tested over 600 people to correctly identify a pure breed American pit bull terrier, and among those were 100 canine professionals. Sixty-three misidentified an Alapha Haw Blue Blood Bulldog, forty-five percent misidentified a Mastiff, forty-four percent misidentified a Preza Canario, and thirty percent misidentified an Adult Boxer. Only two percent of those surveyed correctly identified the pure breed American pit bull terrier without also incorrectly identifying other breeds. Breed's specific legislations are hard to enforce, it's ineffective, and it's unconstitutional. We need Andover to lift their ban and use that budget and resources to enforce existing laws that prosecute and penalize negligent owners who abuse animal and enforce the new vicious dog ordinance that bans all dangerous dogs by examining their behavior and not just by their breed. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? There being none, we will close the public forum and move on to acceptance of the agenda.
One item on the pyrotechnic display.
Striking item eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented with the deletion of Agenda Item Eight, otherwise as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by C.R., second by Greg, to accept the agenda as modified. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, is it September 15th? That's not GAD, is it? What is the, what was the signature?
I think that was supposed to coincide with the National Fireworks Association event in Central Park. I believe that was
Isn't that the final date?
The next day.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, motion by C.R. and a second by Greg. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, the consent agenda. Item 7.1 through 7.5. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to present the, to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have stricken number eight, so we will go to number nine. Temporary zoning permit request.
The request before you tonight is for a pumpkin patch, very similar to the pumpkin patch that was conducted last year about that same time, from September 21 to November 3. Hours of operation would be 10 to 6, Monday through Thursday, and 9 to 8, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I believe the applicants here, if you have any questions about the details.
I have some questions.
You state your name and address for the record, please.
Jacob Marietta, 1611 Ledgerwood.
How many times have you requested permission for a pumpkin patch?
This is our second year, second request.
Okay. And why are you doing that every year?
Because Les tells me to. To be honest, I, it's, I'd actually refer to Les on this. It falls under a temporary permit instead of a, an annual one.
I might ask, I have a couple more questions, but Les, isn't there a seasonal permit that could be obtained so we don't have this every year?
There is a list of these type of events in the zoning regulations under temporary uses that require approval by the city. Holiday events, fireworks, a long laundry list. There are some others that are allowed to be approved by staff as permitted temporary uses, like the Christmas tree lot, which has already been approved for following the pumpkin patch.
What else? Have you requested other events to be permitted out there at your property?
We have, you know, we're trying to, you know, do some more seasonal events to make it a more permanent seasonal events, I guess kind of is a wrong way to put it, but we were going to do Valentine's Day flowers last year, but we were, we were a little late to the game, and our, our vendor ran out before we could sell them. So currently, right now, we're doing the, the three big ones.
And what are those three?
Fireworks, pumpkin patch, and Christmas trees.
Let me ask you this. Would you be opposed to at least plating the property in some fashion to make it more permanent? I'm sure you're aware, there've been discussions about the fact that that is a real key piece of property in the city of Andover. It's right there on the, on the corner, it's the first thing everybody sees, and I assume that, for whatever reason, nothing permanent has been in place. Is that a fair statement?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, yeah, we, we have some things there that, I guess it depends on the, the legal definition of permanent. There's some things we thought were permanent there, but I guess they're temporary.
What do you mean?
Oh, we have a couple, oh, we call them snack areas. Red roofed barns we put out there for the, to put tables under for people to get out of the sun. I learned recently that those are considered a temporary structure.
How is that a temporary structure? That doesn't seem like a temporary structure if you build a structure on something.
They're like a carport, one of those temporary portable type carports.
Let me ask you further. Are you aware of the Highway 54 corridor design plan that we have in place?
I don't know if I've seen the last one. Obviously, I know it's coming, and I don't know, I have not very aware with the, is there a final design now?
I believe there is. I'll, I'll ask Les here and let you answer that question.
Yes, that corridor plan was adopted in 2012.
In that connection, from my recollection, there are certain dedications that may be desired or required from your end to the city to get them to, to accommodate that corridor plan. Are you willing to do those things that are necessary in order to get that accomplished?
I mean, obviously, we have to see what they are, but yeah, I mean, we, we think we're a pretty good community member. We've been here a long time and try to work with the city on, you know, and obviously, progress is progress, and you can't stop it, so you've got to work with it.
I'm going to ask Les another question here. Is there some way that we could begin the process of seeing what is needed by the city in order to accommodate the corridor study that's been passed?
As far as right-of-way dedications?
Yes.
We have all of that. We have a right-of-way plan.
Is that when he develops the property, or do you mean now?
When he develops the property or
Plats.
if the highway precedes the development of the property.
My, my point is, is this. It seems to me that all of us would like to have some understanding by way of a development, whether it's a developer's agreement, whether it's a plat, to begin either developing the property or to get it into what we consider to be a reasonable area. It's a large area, and I know that the fireworks is a wonderful thing, and I'm all in favor of that, but I think there are those that believe it to be reasonably unsightly, and it looks like you're, you've got a lot of paving out there that appears to be rather permanent, but, and it looks like you're wanting some type of permanent development, but nothing's happened. I, I'm really asking you whether that's true or not.
Very much so. We, we've looked at a number of options, and one of the things we are working towards this year is a, and we're, I, I live in a seasonal business, so I live, I'm, I'm lucky and I'm not lucky in that I'm, I get to try businesses to make sure they work on a piece of property where everyone else in the world has to build it and hope they come. I'm able to try some things. So one of the things we're working to, like this year, we're going to add a all-organic, local Wichita-area general store where we have 100% organic cows, we have honey that was raised in Mulvane, we've got a bunch of flowers that were raised by the Amish up in that, and so one of the things we're, we're hoping that may come of that is more of a, you know, we like the farm aspect of it, my family's farmers, is maybe a farmer's market, some, something along those lines going forward to make it kind of a, you know, that sort of a, a facility. And on the, the plating, we, we attempted that, we started the process, I shouldn't say attempted it. We started the process, it's been eight or nine years ago, I'd say, maybe, maybe not quite that long, and there's, there's a lot of restrictions that once we platted, it took away a lot of ambiguity if we changed the final use, and that's why the plating stopped. We were going to plated it as one piece to solve these issues, and like, part of that was, we had to pick the exact locations of the driveways down 159th. Well, if that use changes between now and then, you know, those driveways are obviously, are something we need to move that'll, you know, I can't kill a piece of property over a driveway placement, and, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with the property.
You know, I think you're on the right trail there. It is my strong conviction that you could solve a lot of problems by going through the plating process, and, and if you come upon a, a business where the access point off of 159th is wrong, there, there's no reason you can't come in here and tell us what it is so we can help you get that straightened out, but it's the ambiguity out there that nobody knows what's going on, nobody knows what's, what's going to be next. We're hoping that it would be a beautiful development that we can all be proud of, and it looks to me like that's really what you want to have happen. I think, I, I just think we need to help jump-start that issue.
The property wasn't purchased for completely what we're using it for now. Our, our dream is a development, and, you know, when we bought it, we went right into a recession, not a great time to start a development, and I'm not a huge developer. I'm a, I'm a guy that sells fireworks for a living, and, you know, I got very lucky. I own a beautiful piece of property that I'm very proud of, and I, I also want to turn it into something nice. We just haven't found the right fit. We've met, I spent three days in a local state here last week, meeting with some developers on it. So we, we're actively working that way. We just haven't found the fit for us and someone else, what they, what they want to go forward with.
Would you, would you find it reasonable if we were to approve your request but contingent upon your commencing three months, six months in advance down the road, a development plan so that we can either help you or guide you to how things should occur, and that way we can complete the dedications, and I think the community as a whole would feel better by knowing that we've got actually something going there. Would you agree to that type of thing?
I would. I just, I'd have to look into that. The, the, one of the reasons we stopped the last time is we used, we used the city's engineering firm at that point in time, Mike Thompson. I don't know if you guys remember Mike, who's
Sure.
used to sit right there forever.
Yeah.
And when we did the project, their initial bid to plated as one piece of property was $65,000. And that's a, you know, I, I can't afford $65,000 to say that my piece of property still has the same property lines that it did, you know, today. And that, that's one of the other reasons that stopped us was the, which I'm more than willing to work with this, but, you know, and I know part of that turns in how we work with you guys and how many times we have to come back, but that cost out of the blue for, is a very high cost for a development.
Yeah. I, I don't blame you. That's a very high sum of money. It's, it's a big piece of property. I don't know what the proper price is and so forth. Let me ask Les, I got one more question. On, on the fireworks stand, what, do you have to get a temporary permit for that every year?
It's not a temporary permit for the fireworks, I don't believe. Once again, I refer, obviously, Les knows.
Yeah, it's an annual license for a fireworks retail location.
But the
Part of that is
But the fireworks is permitted in the zoning that is currently existing on the property?
By temporary use.
You have eight to nine fireworks tents out there that are in the parking lot here and the empty lots there and there and there. That's a totally separate process. But he does have to apply and pay the, the fee every year.
Let me ask you, would you be willing to sit down with Les and make a good faith effort to try to get either a, a plat or some type of development program so that we can be assured that, from ourselves and others, that things are being done to try to accomplish some type of decent development in that area?
Of course. Yeah, and like I said, that's, that's the whole purpose of that property, is to, to develop it, and we're, obviously, would like to move forward with it. The economy's doing a little better, real estate's doing a little better, so, I mean.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I guess I would, I'd like to make some comments here that I, I want this gentleman to make money, because if you don't make money, you're not going to be here. I, I do want that to happen, and I don't want you to get ripped off, well, cost-wise and all that sort of thing. I, I can tell you that it's going to be expensive to get the plating done, and I know that you don't want to plate it with nothing on board, but I think that you are willing, and I think my motion will be contingent upon your meeting with Les within the next six months to slowly but surely develop the land in some fashion, whether by plat or some other guidelines, that we can rest assured that something affirmative is going to develop in that property. Does that, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, very reasonable.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the temporary use application for the pumpkin patch on the dates set forth herein, subject to the owner meeting with Les within the next six months, with the understanding that you will do with this gentleman your best efforts to either begin a, a plating process, get a, a site plan of some type, and, and make sure that we have the corridor 54 complied with, and, and then, so I'll, I'll leave my motion at, at that then.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, motion by C.R. and a second by Greg to approve the temporary use application to permit this pumpkin patch from September 21st through November 3rd, with the hours set forth within, on the condition that the owner meets with staff to discuss a more permanent plan and/or plating of the property. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Clark. I haven't heard, I heard, just kind of through the grapevine, I guess, from someone that someone was challenging even authorizing this tonight, but I didn't really get any specifics on it, like if it was due to a reason, like if it was because of unsightliness or, or what. Is there something that's, that I missed, maybe, that's people are talking about?
I'm going to guess that what you've stated is reasonably accurate. I don't know of anything sinister about it. It was, the expression that was conveyed was that we, we have a, a key site at 159th and 54 for the city of Andover, you know, and you've been pretty careful about appearance, whether it's 21st Street or Central, and now we have 159th, and we, we may be ignoring that one, and all we're saying is that we would like that to be developed at some point in time. I don't want to penalize anybody, but I think that's something that we ought to be really looking at, and this might give us an avenue to, to start that process. That's really all that I was, I was getting towards.
Thank you.
Maybe to add to that, some comments that I had heard, and I'm not expecting you to be a YMCA, but we have at one end, you're entering Andover, and there is this extremely nice development, and that is there, and that people see that, and it's gateway into Andover, and then, then we come from the west side, and we've got this big open field that temporary things change frequently on it, and I certainly appreciate and want a property owner to be able to do what they want with their property, but I also want you to realize that the community would certainly like to see something be more permanent and something that would be more demonstrative of, hey, you're a nice, a nice development that you can see something, and I, I don't know what that would be, and it sounds like you're trying to come up with some ideas, so that's great, and just appreciate your working toward that.
I think you're trying to say that it needs to be sightly when there's times when your seasons aren't going on. There's a lot of
It's gotten out of hand a little bit, I'll admit. We, we overstretched ourselves this last year with help. Help is hard to come by, and it's not in the condition we'd like to leave it. I mean, we're very open to admit that, and we have a plan, and we've met with staff after the Christmas tree season to clean it up, so it's, it was not, although I think it was okay, it was not great, and we strive to keep our property a little nicer than that. I mean, we rent property and have property all over the state, and it wasn't left in the condition that we liked it. We, I mean, to be honest, we just, we overstretched ourselves with our work, and with our fireworks season in the southern states, we got busy and got down there into that, and 4th of July comes quick sometimes. I know that sounds crazy, but it, it got us too quick this year, so we, we are working on that.
I guess I will comment on this subject. Yeah, I mean, let's be blunt, the, the complaints that we get are from the condition of the property. The complaints that we hear now are, there's nothing there permanently, but yet the property is used repeatedly throughout the year, and I guess, I, I guess I'm going to take exception to this motion. Landowners have rights, and I, I think you, I don't, I don't like you tying this all together with the condition that he meets with staff to talk about future development of his property. He just stated to you, he's already done that. He can plaid it if he wants to. He's not ready to plaid it, or he would already have done it. Now, if you want to hold this permits hostage to that thought, be my guest, but having him meet with staff, you know the process. Your engineers know the process, to get this platted and then do the proper right-of-way dedications for the Kellogg Corridor Expansion, but this smacks of blackmail to me, and I think you need to separate them. Either approve it on its own merits or don't approve it. I mean, that, that's what it seems like to me. Now, you have a motion and a second, and we'll ask for further discussion, but I got to tell you, I don't, as, as a landowner myself, I don't like it. And I don't think it's fair to shove staff into this thing. I mean, what's he going to say? He's going to say, here's your process, here are your forms, take them to your engineers, they know what to do, and that's going to be the end of the discussion, so.
All we've done in this motion, and, and I respectfully disagree with the mayor on this one, all we've really attempted to do is ask for a good faith effort to maybe jump-start the process, to try to get some type of organization up there. We're not requiring you to say that you've got to have it planted in six months. I understand where you are, but I, I think it would demonstrate a good faith effort to, as Caroline says, as to produce something in, in a longer-term basis. That's all that we're asking for.
Well, how about we just take that out of the motion and suggest that he, as a side note, that he meets with staff at some point?
Again, why is he meeting with staff? What, what are you going to tell him?
That wouldn't be
Nothing that I haven't told him in the past?
Yeah. It, it wouldn't be part of the motion.
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor that contains it, so unless somebody wants to revise their motion, we're going to vote this one up or down. Further discussion.
Well, maybe just so that I completely understand it. I didn't feel like this motion was binding on the applicant, that he had to produce something for us. I viewed it as just trying, and I agree with you that it was sticking out a carrot, but we would like to see you make progress toward developing this and be thinking about something, so I am not by any means with my vote to support it, saying that I absolutely expect you to be done with this and to have it plaid. So, um, I am not by any means with my vote to support it, saying that I absolutely expect you to be done with this and to have it platted. If, if you run into another situation where you, you find it's, you know, costly beyond, I'm not gonna hold you, I'm not holding you hostage to complete something. I'm just personally hoping to see you moving toward that.
Further discussion.
I think that would be my, my thoughts as well, too. Not holding you to plat it tomorrow or not.
So, why don't you just say, hey?
I'm ready to call for the motion.
Call for a vote? Motion's already been called. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number ten. We have a vacation case, two thousand eighteen dash zero four. Um, I don't have a little spreadsheet, so I'm required to open up a public hearing, right?
Correct.
There's no regular checklist?
There's no checklist. This is just a public hearing.
So, at this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing, uh, regarding, uh, complete access control for Shadow Rock Edition. Uh, there's just four, uh, properties here, four addresses?
Yes, on North Lakeside Drive, there are some cul-de-sac lots that were access-controlled by plating such that the driveways had to enter from the cul-de-sac only. The petitioner would like some relief from that in order to build a house model that has a loop driveway that would connect across the corner and, and possibly one of the, one of the garage openings would face Lakeside Drive and the other garage opening would face the cul-de-sac, but have that loop so that a person didn't have to back out into Lakeside Drive when they leave their garage.
The applicant here? Do you wanna add anything?
No.
Okay, anyone else like to speak? All right, this time I'll close the public hearing and move on, uh, to the order itself.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the vacation order prepared by the city attorney, uh, for the access control on Shadow Rock Edition. I think that the, uh, request is fair and reasonable.
A second.
All right, motion by C R. and a second by Mike to approve vacation case via two thousand eighteen dash zero four. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, talking about the, uh, new neighborhood revitalization plan.
Mr. Mayor, as you require at the last meeting, we set a date for a public hearing on the neighborhood revitalization plan. Uh, I don't know if you wanna wait till after I'm done talking to take public input. I don't know how much we'll have, but, uh, I can either give the presentation first or we can hold the public hearing first.
Presentation.
Well, uh, as the council will recall, uh, in a workshop, uh, we talked about renewing the neighborhood revitalization plan, which just by quick way of explanation is a property tax rebate program for properties that are in qualified areas that make investments over twenty-five thousand dollars on a residential project and over fifty thousand dollars on a commercial project. And if you successfully follow all our permitting rules, plating, zoning rules, and pay your taxes in full and on time, you'll receive a rebate of, uh, fifty percent. Actually, it's forty-five percent, 'cause the county takes a five percent administrative fee in the rebate. Um, but it's an incentive essentially to invest in certain areas of town. You can see the map, uh, up there on the screen. It's essentially the same, uh, areas we had in the current plan, except we took out the Winchester addition at the southern end of the city and added Reflection Lakes just south of, uh, Kellogg. We've kept the Prairie Creek subdivision, which is a, a new, uh, residential subdivision in there because it again is for primarily entry homes, uh, first-time buyer-type homes. And then, of course, we have the older areas of Andover that would provide a, uh, incentive to have some infill development and also we're hoping that people will remodel, uh, rehabilitate some properties in there. And if you do that, you have a little bit extra incentive that any improvement you have with that would get a ninety-five percent rebate over five years. Uh, we, uh, looking at budget-wise, when I work with Don on the budget, believe this is costing the city, if you use the term costs, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, making it clear, nothing's coming off the tax rolls. This is all new improvements, uh, no one's losing a dime. Neither will any of our partners that we'll go to and ask for them to participate in it, the school district, the community college, or, uh, the county. In fact, the school district at this point, uh, isn't even losing their eight mills for capital outlay. That's been exempted in future neighborhood revitalization programs as well as the industrial revenue, um, uh, bonds. So, that's a kind of added benefit for them, is a little bit more incentive to be involved. Um, the, uh, only other issue that, uh, I, I can really say at this time is that we just have to be very clear with people that they're required to pay their taxes on time and in full to get the rebate. We have some confusion with people being a couple of weeks later. They get removed from the program by the county who's administering the program and then we have to ask the county's permission to let them back in. We have a one-time exception, uh, that allows for that, uh, but we've had to ask for that on several properties and they'll be up against, uh, being kicked out of the program if they don't pay again. So, I just, I wanna be, uh, clear on that, that you have to pay your property taxes in order to get the property tax rebate on time. Um, our, we had this conversation kinda last night with the college, but, you know, from staff's standpoint, and I believe the council agrees on a policy basis, is we have a property tax disparity with Sedgwick County. And, um, you know, there's about a twenty-five to thirty-three percent, uh, difference in property taxes. This gives us an advantage for about a five-year period. I've, I've looked at it and it probably puts us, uh, twenty-five percent below most of the properties, uh, on the Kellogg corridor, Central and, and Twenty-first. So, when someone's coming to look at developing and they wanna go on one side of the line or other, we can at least say that, well, initially, your property taxes will be a little bit lower in Andover. It's obviously not in all areas, but in those areas that are designated. Another thing I wanna mention is that if there are any properties that are outside, uh, the neighborhood revitalization areas that we've designated, uh, we can still include them in the program. The council has to designate by resolution that they're a dilapidated, dangerous structure or something of that type, but we can, we still have the opportunity, even if they haven't been included in here. If they, uh, come under the section of blight and are a dangerous structure, we would still have an opportunity. There's an extra step left in there. We did not utilize that in the last three years. I don't think it was utilized in the previous, uh, uh, incarnation of the plan either. So, it's not something you'll see, uh, frequently, but it could happen. Um, I guess I would stand for any questions at this point of the council or anybody else about any specifics.
Okay, so at this time, let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Ask if anyone would like to speak. Crickets. Close the public hearing and move the conversation up here to the council.
Uh, Ms. Mayor.
Carolyn.
Mark, just for clarification, that, uh, at the end, you, what, I believe I heard you say, and it sounds like a good idea, if there is some property that is not specifically identified, but later comes to realize this is available to them and would come and apply if it meets those qualifications of that blighted or, you, that's what you're saying, that they can get into the program even though they're not identified right now.
It, it is not automatic. The council has to approve, so that, that's, that's the kinda.
And we could determine whether we would add something in.
That's kinda the extra step.
And this has always been available in each of our other projects and no one has ever come and asked that.
Not, not that I know of, unless somebody else knows of an instance.
Well, that's nuts. I don't think I realized we did that before, so I, I think that sounds good.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would also say is that kind of our timing on this is I've asked the school superintendent if Jenny could go to the September tenth meeting and she will graciously ask for their approval. And I was wondering if another council member would volunteer to go.
Well, I'll be there, September tenth.
Yep.
Sunday night.
And, uh, sounds, it sounds like the mayor make it. Then, we will try to get on the community college.
The school district liaison.
I think that's you, so.
That's right, that's why I'm there.
But I wasn't gonna volunteer you necessarily. Um, and then, we'll, we'll also in, uh, uh, September probably get on the county commission's agenda and then I would guess at this point, we'll try to get on the October agenda for the community college. The attorney general has to approve the inter-local agreement, which you'll be making another motion, uh, to approve as well. Um, and so, they have up to ninety days from the time our city attorney, uh, submits it. So, our timing may not be perfect on this to get this going again January first. Um, but, you know, we should be close and I, I hope we can get this, uh, considered and, uh, through the door before that. But if it's mid-January, it's not a crisis by any means, but we don't wanna wait too long.
Another clarification for me. Do we do all this passing and then wait for the state to approve it? Or do we get the state approval and then we pass?
No, we have to have everybody signed on to the inter-local agreement before we submit it. That's one of their big things, is a signature from everybody.
We have all agreed that this is what we're waiting to do and then we get the approval from the state.
And I just wanna be clear that the state only approves the inter-local agreement. They don't approve the neighborhood revitalization plan. So, we, you know, essentially just send them up the inter-local agreement and ask if, if it complies with state law. And, you know, they certainly haven't been quick for most people, so, you know, that's why continuing this process on is, uh, critical.
So, you want us to approve the resolution first and then the inter-local agreement?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mayor.
Carolyn.
Um, I move to, uh, approve the resolution adopting the city of Andover neighborhood revitalization plan.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, um, I, at this point, would move to approve the inter-local agreement with USD three eighty-five while the county, Butler Community College, that's a mouthful, and the city of Andover entering each entity into the city of Andover's neighborhood revitalization plan and allow the mayor to sign such agreement.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Troy to approve the inter-local agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess we're down to member items. Carolyn, you'd like to start us off?
I've got a kind of a negative and a positive, so I don't know which to start with, but.
Negative.
Negative, okay, negative. I'm driving, I'm on, uh, in Mecca Acres, picking up a senior lady that I take to the senior center. And I believe that a couple of weeks ago, we had this discussion about littering, so y'all know how I feel about littering. Anyway, I, I'm leaving Mecca Acres and I'm sitting at the stop sign. There is a vehicle in front of me, so there are two of us stopped waiting to get onto fifty-four. It takes a while. And then there is a car that pulls up behind me and stops. So, we're all waiting and everybody's doing this and when can we make our turns? And the fellow in front of me is wanting to go left, which is going to be more difficult than me because I'm wanting to go right, so he's got to cross two different. Anyway, he gets the opening and I'm ready, 'cause I'm like, I'm gonna be able to go too. And then that sucker just right out his window pitched this. I was so shocked. I missed my turn-to-turn, but I was so mad. I started honking my horn, but I could not get his license plate number. But I was furious. But he just threw this, here are these cars stopped and he just throws this out his window. He knew, he, he's turning around and, and people in the backseat are turning around, 'cause I was really laying on the horn. But this just infuriates me. Then, I was so mad, I hopped out of the car because I didn't wanna leave it out there on our highway blown around. And then, of course, the guy behind me is wondering what I'm doing and I'm like, I'm sorry, but, you know, I'm just mad.
Caroline, could you please discard that tonight?
I will. But it's funny, when I got here, it was still lying on, on my floor where I had thrown it when I got in my car, so I thought I would bring it there with you. Okay, that's my negative, but.
I hope he's watching tonight.
I do, too. I'm telling you, if I could've had his license plate number, I would've and probably nothing could've been done, but, okay. Secondly, my really good piece of news, uh, that, I forget this right, the right order. I believe the Grub and Groove Festival was absolutely fantastic for all people who enjoyed it and even those of us that were on the older side, it was, it was fun. I think, I hate to say this, but I think out of all the events we've had there, I enjoyed it more than any of the others. Um, I think what I enjoyed about it was the, um, it, it was like entertainment throughout the music. There was music and, but the people were just very entertaining. Our own mayor was called up, and this was cool. They, they got people out of the audience up doing things, but our own mayor was a really great sport and was called up and was put through the embarrassment of having to show his moves and did a great job speaking about and representing the center. And our council member, Mr. Tabor, uh, did as well earlier on in welcoming, welcoming our crowd. But it was fabulous and I understand we've had feedback from people about how much they enjoyed it and I think that it might become a regular event and I highly recommend it. So, just wanted to share that.
Yes, that was pretty awesome, watching you dance. And they didn't ask me to dance, so it's probably a good thing for everybody. But yeah, it'll, it'll be, I, I don't know what the right word is and I can't wait to see what happens with the amphitheater over the next year and two years and three years as promoters like Platform Promotions and others come and start putting in things like this that we would never have expected to even, I mean, we would probably not have booked something like that and yet it turned out to be huge.
Fantastic.
Fantastic event, yeah. So, I, I really look forward to seeing that as well.
Well, in addition to that, it brought in a completely different group of people to our community that has really been in our community before and it was just fabulous. It really was. I really enjoyed. I sat with a, a former, uh, council member in the city of Wichita, Levana Williams.
Levante.
And, um, she's just really cool and I had met her before. She wasn't gonna remember me, but I remembered her and her husband and we just chatted all evening long. It was great.
Caroline, there were folks who traveled in from as far away as Memphis and Dallas.
Wow, wow. So, do you know if they were staying in any local accommodations?
They were, some of them.
Some were in the local hotel and several were downtown in the hotels.
Ooh, one more thing. I'm so sorry, but I, you can tell that I thought this event was fantastic. They had the absolute most fabulous caterer. So, if anybody, and I have a card from that caterer. I'm telling you, it was so cool. And I, I realize this was the VIP meal, but you, you walk in and not only was their food just fantastic, but it was all linen tablecloths and linen napkins and individual tables for everybody to sit at. These people put on a show. And from what I could smell, the food vendors that were out there for the people who didn't pay the money that would get them into the VIP.
They were busy all night, long lines.
But they smelled good, too.
Yeah, it was good food.
Their, their kingpin vendor broke down on the highway coming from Ohio, so they were one vendor short. All the others had to pick up the.
Do you know if their crowd reached the size that they had hoped it would or how it compared to the events?
About five thousand, wasn't it, I heard?
I had a nice conversation yesterday with the promoter. He was very impressed, very gracious.
That was Chuck?
Chuck, yes. And he's guessing somewhere between four and five thousand, which is the same or maybe a little bit more than what he's averaged when he's held it in Wichita the preceding three years.
Oh, that was one more funny thing. The people that were up there performing kept referring to us as Wichita and, you know, we're all groaning. And so, our wonderful mayor got up and informed them that they were in Andover, thank goodness. But that was cute, too. So, again, I'm getting people to know exactly where they are, even though it's at Andover Theater, but it was, it was great. All right, I'm quiet.
And they've called. They already, they've already called. They wanna book something next year, but I think it's like a gospel-type event is what they wanna do next.
Yeah, Grub and Gospel.
I think they're gonna do both. They were looking at doing, um, and Les can correct me, but I think they were gonna do the gospel on a Friday night and the groove on a Saturday night, but make it a two-day event.
Excellent. What were you gonna say, Chief?
That, that five thousand number you had was an estimate that I sent you. That was just an estimate from us, but I think we're pretty close. And, uh, another thing, I spoke to a couple of business people and they said they were busy during. And, uh, another thing, I spoke to a couple of business people, and they said they were busy during and after our concert.
Wonderful.
It sounded good in Crescent Lakes, too, so.
Oh, you could hear it all the way, when, I didn't stay till the very end, so I got back home, clear as far away as I am, and I could still hear it. It wasn't, and it wasn't loud or offensive, but I mean, I could, I was surprised that I could still hear the music.
Maybe it was just reverberating in that head area for a while.
No, it was for real.
You have any comments for?
Sure, um, just, uh, one more, I guess. A big change at the Tabor household is my, my wife left Spirit, and she's been there as an exec for a long time. Um, she's now gonna be the, eh, executive vice president of H.R. for Empress Bank. So it should be a pretty awesome change.
Probably retire.
That'd be nice, but I'm not, I'm forty-three, so.
Each has nothing to do with it, brother.
So I just had to throw that out to her, it's, it's a big deal, it's a big change. And she more than deserves, you know, positions.
I'm sure you have dinner ready for her. C.R.?
Uh, just one item, I don't know that you saw the Wichita paper today, but they had on the front page, where they have the, uh, EMS reporting to minor accidents similar to what we adopted several months ago. That word has spread in a hurry. I, I hope that it's successful, I don't, the jury's still out on what we have done. And it's not relevant to what we're doing, but it's substantially identical to what, after we had all those meetings and so forth, it's, uh, identical to what we had adopted.
They're referring to their fire department not running certain medical laws, but on EMS?
Look, I'll say, I was, I had to be at that council meeting for Wichita, when they were talking about that, and the, the, the fire chief wasn't too keen on it at the time, but certainly everyone, um, up on the, just like we were, could certainly see the need to alleviate and allow the fire department to focus more on fire and not EMS. It was an interesting meeting.
I, it, uh, shows at least we're thinking in the current fashion, and-
They always take after us, Clark, you know?
That's right. That, that's all that I have.
I just have one thing, the shade structure that you're building on North Main over there by Red Bud Trail, that's, looks, looks really nice. I know it's not complete, but I go by there quite a bit, and it's really nice.
Better stop going by.
I go by every day, I, I didn't even, guess I gotta look.
We're pressing the contractor to be finished quickly, as we have an event for the Red Bud Trail with Artie, the twenty-ninth, Saturday, the twenty-ninth, for Greater Andover Days.
It looks like they have the structure complete, now they gotta do the-
They have the flat work done, and still have a little bit of work to do on the seat benches.
It looks good, that's all I have.
Thank you.
A couple of things I wanna promote, uh, the Andover Central Buschert Club has two events we're doing. Uh, September seventh, we're doing a golf ball drop at halftime at the Andover Central Football Game against Eisenhower. Uh, the fire department's gonna be there with their ladder truck, and we're gonna drop, uh, several hundred golf balls into a, hopefully, one goes into a golf hole, and the winner will win five hundred bucks. So if you're, anyone's interested, please let me know, I'll hook you up, uh, with, with, uh, tickets for that. And the other event we're doing is September the ninth, we're doing a golf ball scramble at the Municipal Golf Course. Uh, we're still adding teams on that, so if you, um, need, uh, if you know anybody, please let me know, or you can also go to the Andover Central Buschert Club website.
Fair enough. Staff, have anything?
I, I would mention our next meeting, September eleventh, um, will be NFA, and we would kindly request, and I think you all do, but if you don't, would you please park in this back employee lot, we'll have it blocked with cones just for, um, the staff and the city council that'll attend this meeting, um, because NFA will be using, um, the majority of the remaining parking, paved parking out here for their events that night. They won't be, and we are moving that up to six, yes? Okay, so, um, they won't be here a lot at six o'clock, but by the time we get out of the meeting, they'll be arriving from Wichita.
Moving our council meeting up to six?
I do believe we voted on that, yes, yes, a few meetings ago.
Well, right.
And, and I think that just brings something to me, too. The Boy Scouts are gonna come and, and do a request for, uh, to camp in the park in October.
They're gonna do that on the sixth?
They're gonna do that on the eleventh.
The eleventh?
They're gonna come do their request, so it'll be-
Where are they gonna park?
Well, I, I explained to her that if they showed up, and there was no place to just park wherever, and if there was a whole bunch of people here and fireworks going off, not to worry about any of it, just come on in, and they were all very fine, but she would like to have, um, an elected official, the scouts need an elected, an official to speak to them, um, fifteen minutes maybe prior to the meeting that evening, if anybody would like to volunteer for that.
What day is that, Tuesday?
Tuesday, September the eleventh.
Sure, just needed to remind me.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
September eleventh.
I'll give them the what for?
For a badge or something.
Citizenship, probably.
And then I'm sure they'll wanna do the pledge of allegiance for us.
There is one item we have to have, and that's a special use permit for the community college. I mean, that was approved at the last planning commission meeting, and it's, uh, gotta go on there, so I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. And I don't think we'll get a large crowd for that, but-
You never know. Anything else? Let's get out of here.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second by Troy, second by Caroline, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Jenny? Do you want this caterer card and, and?